All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 2016-2017 Annual Meeting of the School District of North Fondleac and Plague of the Year. According to the agenda, the first order of business is to elect a chairperson for the meeting. So, I'll just move to the board.
Or anyone.
Or anyone. For that matter, this is our forum.
I will nominate Peter Chisholm as the chairperson on the board of the meeting.
Your vote has been taken.
I'll second it.
I'll accept that. All right. We've been seconded to elect Peter Chisholm as the chairperson of the meeting. Any questions or discussion? Not all those. Favorite signify by saying aye.
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 Just require a vote call.
No.
So.
All right. Thank you, folks. Next order of business is to elect a person to act as clerk if the clerk is absent, but is not, so...
We're done?
We're good there? Number five, presentation and adoption of the school board report.
Forgot the minute.
Oh, yes. It's not on agenda. I forgot. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, founded with liberty and justice for all. The minutes of the last annual meeting were distributed and are available to those people who are here. Expeditions or corrections to minutes as they are printed? Except the motion that they be approved as lieutenant.
Well, they are approved and may be done, but this information.
All right. Thank you. So then, they will stand as approved as lieutenant. Now, presentation ended after the school board report.
Thank you very much. What I'll just do is go through really quick just some beginning, as this information got this out last Thursday. You had the welcome letter, has our goals in the front, and a little bit more about what's going on here in our district. Open enrollment, kind of a overall kind of summary of where we're at and how we've seen tremendous levels of growth, not only in students, but also revenue because of open enrollment, even up to the point where we had to close open enrollment for special education students in some grade level because we were full and couldn't handle any more students without significant human resource hiring. And then also in the back, looked at the continued board priorities, and then also where we have our increased state aid and that the board is all in the budget, it's also additional $674,000 to help pay down the debt sooner. And you can see that with all the information in the budget, that the recommendation would be that the board's recommendation adopted in September, our budget was at $9.64,700, which is the same as it's been for the past few years, and we'll go more in depth of that. And the report then is continuing on, looked at the timeline, looked to get followed probably for the past since Maria's been here. It kind of helps us keep looking at where we're going and keep us going. We're already looking at the next budget, but that's going to be a huge thing next year with the biennial budget coming up, the governor's budget should be coming soon, so we'll get ready for some really interesting things about where resources are going to go or lack thereof. We have strategic plan of practice. This is something Adam and the team, Adam's really going to start taking more and more ownership in this. This is kind of our initiatives on one page of what we do in order to help students become and prepare all students to be life, career, and college ready. These are the educational standards, once again, of how we evaluate all of our staff, our professional staff. And then we have the budget. So, at this time, I'll turn over to Maria. Does anybody have any questions about the earlier information letters? Okay. I'll turn it over to Maria, and she can go through the budget, and then also through the slide presentation. I have that up here.
Okay. The budget is what was published in the paper on the 10th. For DPI, we have to publish that 10 days before the annual meeting, so that is what was published, and that's what we'll record on tonight. I also wanted to mention in your packet, and you guys have all been through the annual meeting several times, so if it's okay, I'm going to skip through all of the educational part of it, if that's okay, and just get right into the budget and attend any objections to that. Feel free to stop me anytime if you don't understand something or if you want more clarification. But in your packet are the accounting definitions, as well as the detailed line-by-line expenditures for this next year as proposed. So, the definitions will help you go through that budget, should you want to go through it in that much detail. I won't be going through it in that much detail. Okay. So, 2016-17. And Erin, I think we can skip through the first. The first slide is the budget process, which we've talked about for the last several years.
One thing I do want to do is thank you. This is the second year now that we've got the annual meeting, the third Monday in October, and it's really been very helpful to have real tangible information instead of having it in early September where we didn't have our third Friday count, we didn't have our equalized aid, we didn't have all those numbers that had come out until in October, so this has been very helpful.
Yes, it has. We'll be tweaking it for the budget on the 24th of October, but only, I think the aid is going to change by like $3,000, so that's something else you were able to know. So, the 24th will be the final budget. All right. I think we're going to skip ahead there in a little bit. And you guys all remember why revenue limit is so important, we talked about that in our budget and everything, how much aid and taxes we can raise legally. Equalization aid, just a little reminder, it's determined by people membership and by the equalized tax value. We'll talk about both of those things and the changes over the last year in some slides that are going to follow. You guys all remember this pendulum, I'm sure, as equalization aid goes down, tax levy goes up, so the entire revenue limit is unchanged, and the vice versa.
And this has been one of our financial strategies, in order to maximize money that we can get from the state, so it's been, we've been able to maximize what our share can be from the state for our students in the district.
Okay. This slide is interesting. I just keep adding to it every year. Our equalized, this is step one of determining our tax levy, basically. Equalize, or the historical property value in FTE. Our property value actually went up about 4% over the last year, and our FTE went down just a little bit. And when that happens, there's more equalized aid spread over, typically, there's more property value spread over less kids, and typically that would make us look property wealthy, and we would have less aid. Now, you can kind of see in between 2009 and 2014-15, that's where we had less equalized aid, because we had a dip in our FTE. We were, actually, we had, yes, we had less than equalized aid, because we had a dip in our FTE, and our property value was looking like it was going up. And now, the next slide is going to show how much our equalized aid has changed over the last five years. So, from '12-13, we were at about 7.1 million, almost 7.2 million, and now we're at about 8.9. So, five-year change. We've increased our equalized aid by about 1.7 million, which means we've been able to lower our tax levy. If we hadn't overlevied, our tax levy would be going down, because we're getting more aid.
And a lot of that aid comes because we have more kids. More kids means more aid.
Revenue limit, yeah. More revenue limit. Yep. And then the next slide shows, that's 100% of our revenue limit, and then this slide shows the percentage of aid, which is the blue, compared to the red, which is our tax levy. So, you can see this year, it's increased. Actually, our aid went up by about 8%, but we're at about 75.25 now, where last year we were at about 73. So, you can see that shift now in less tax impact on our district. Okay. And then the second part in determining our revenue limit is FTE, full-time equivalency. This slide shows, the blue line shows that leveled out three-year average. So, right now, we've actually added about 20 FTE to our revenue limit, so we're getting about $9,000, over $9,000 per student, times 20 students, more than we did last year. And then the yellow lines, those bars, it shows we've gone down about 16 resident students this year.
No, our thought process on that, we were up 70, so we're plus 70 in open enrollment, down 16 in FTE.
Resident.
One of the things is, we know that we've had some families that have moved to Fondleac or Oshkosh that now open enroll their kids in, so even though they no longer live in the district, their kids stay here and they go from being a full-time resident to being open enrolled. So, that's one of the places where, even though our FTE is going down, we're seeing more in open enrollment, and I would venture to say probably at least half of those that are no longer here are open enrolled in.
The FTE numbers do not include open enrollment?
No.
Our revenue limit is based only on our resident students.
The open enrollment is the $6,400 that we get from other districts, and that happens at the end of the year.
Yep. That gets added to our state aid or the bill out. So, that's, this is kind of a wacky slide, but it's showing our open enrollment history.
And this is pretty incredible.
2006-7. So, back in 2006-7, we were negative 43 open enrolled students, and today we're up 70. So, that's, we're definitely a district of choice. And then this shows the revenue gain or loss from those open enrolled kids.
So, we've had a swing of $773,000 of the plus of open enrollment, from the negative $238,000 to now over half a million dollars of revenue coming in for students. And that is with restrictions that the board, the numbers, we'll revisit those numbers again in January, where I think it was third grade, we didn't have any, allow any, I believe it was juniors, and it was freshmen, and then also special education students, that restriction, that'll be there.
Lot of cameras.
Yes. Very light.
So, this year, it'll be over a half a million dollars that we're budgeting for open enrollment revenue. And if you remember, there was a change in the open enrollment, special ed, we'd get $12,000 per special ed student, and that can be whether they cost $40,000 or whether it costs $6,000 to educate. It's just the DPI has declared that it's $12,000 for every student. So, it's actually helped us, because we had, we have such a high special ed population coming in, and we're getting $12,000 for each of them, while a lot of them in the past would have been maybe just speech and language, and we're only getting $67,000. So, it's helped us. And then this, this slide, the next slide, adds both the open enrollment and resident FTE, and it just tells you the story there. We're up 37 total students this year, and that's with open enrollment and our resident students combined. So, up 37 students since last year, that's 3.8%, up 182 since '12-13. And especially at FLC, the FTE limit, there's a lot of girls over there. And we explained, we had to decrease about 16 resident students, but in talking with Darcy, Darcy compiled, she's our receptionist in the office, and she compiles the open enrollment information, and she is seeing that these students, while their families are moving, they want to keep their students here, so...
And I think to kind of put in perspective, if we were Fondleac, with the Fondleac's just over 7,000 students, that would mean, in the past, since 2012-13, so in the past four years, we would have gained 980 students. So, and that's the middle school, and that's elementary or two. So, to put in a kind of perspective what's been going on and how we've been growing, that's a... Do we track the number of resident students who leave through open enrollment?
Oh, sure.
Do you know what that is up in, or...
Um, I have, let's see, out.
And I imagine the same dynamics going on there, where they may be coming from someplace else, living here, going back to there.
Right.
What I always do when we look at open enrollment is I look at what students are currently in our district, like, you know, for middle school, high school, elementary, that are new open enrolled out. And I can't think of one student in the past three years that I knew of that was here that wasn't happy and they opened enrolled out. So, a lot of open enrolled out are people who are, never came here in the first place, they started a 4K somewhere else, their parents may work somewhere, but it's just, we've never seen them here. About three years ago, I put out a survey to every single open enrolled in-and-out family, and I got one response. So, that's one thing I always do, is look at, okay, what students are here, and now decided not to be here, because they want to be somewhere else, and I haven't. I can only, the one student left is for STEM in Fondleac, we didn't have something like that, so...
And open enrollment is just those who are open enrolled into the public?
Correct.
Correct.
The ones who go private, we don't know, although we did find out, what is it, 38?
We had, we had five again this year, and it was about $38,000 that were coming up over here.
So, we will pay...
Five in addition to the previous...
No, five total.
No, five total.
Five total students at the Springs and WLA, so we paid private schools $38,000.
What?
We paid the private...
$38,000 divided by five?
Yeah.
Wow. I'm not going to do that math. Yeah, I think there were 2K through 8, and then three high schoolers.
And it's $7,200 for K through 8, and about 78 for high school.
Yeah. Yep. So, Steve, to answer your question, we had 265 open enrolled in, and we had 195 open enrolled out.
And we've seen that number since Act 10 in the past couple of budgets, because now open enrollment is like year-round, after July 1st, there's special open enrollment, and it's almost impossible unless there's a behavioral problem or something that procludes, or if we have shut down in the grades because we don't have the space, that students can come in and pretty much open enroll throughout the year. We used to have open enrollment, if it ever got over 150 either way, that was a lot, but now because of the new rules, we see that quite a bit. We had quite a few after the first, especially from Fondleac, that wanted to open enroll here.
Alternative.
Alternative enrollment. And what we do is every time we get a student from Fondleac, or anywhere, we vet the situation, request all the records. We can deny if there's pending behavioral thing, and then we will deny, and we've done that before. So, but other than that, we, place where, we have more coming to you, and I can't think of one that left since we started.
Oh, really good news. Very, really good. So, from there, we determine the mill rate for our tax levy. And our tax levy is based on those three models that are in that bucket, the general and non-referendum debt, which is funds 10, fund 38, that you'll hear me refer to. That is subject to the revenue limit. And then our referendum debt levy, which is fund 39, and our community service levy, which is fund 80. So, those are the three things that we levy for. This is a history of our mill rate, and as Erin mentioned, we have been very successful in keeping it steady since about 2011-12. We had a little jump in 2012-13, and then we've been able to stabilize it again. It's been a decision of the board to do that, to keep it steady as our debt drops off. If we did not overlevy, our mill rate would go down about $8.25 this year. So, and we've talked with Baird, and Baird 100% agrees that it's a tough decision to be making right now in the position that we're in, possibly looking at referendum. So, that's a long history of our mill rate, and then this is a comparison of mill rates in the area. And I put a little disclaimer at the bottom, that some of this may be, they may be inflated due to, they may have just done referendums, and then they have popped their mill rates up a little bit.
And now, remember, the mill rate is not the same for all municipalities. Depending on what the equalized aid is, friendships might not be 964, it might be 957. The town of Fondleac might be 970. The village might be 964. So, depending on what, with the equalized value of the properties in those different municipalities, that dictates a little bit where that mill rate is. So, when you look at your property tax bill, it may be down, it may be up, depending on what municipality, but in average, it's, that's what it'd be.
So, this is the average over all the tax bases, is it?
Correct.
And the average of all of our neighbors there is about $10.40, so we're below the average there. And then, we're below the average with regards to the state as well. We are the blue line, and the state is the red line. So, we've been consistently below the state average for equalized tax. And then, as Erin mentioned, these are the equalized values by municipalities, so we will take that entire tax levy, and it'll be divvied up by equalized value. So, that's why not everybody will have a 964 mill rate.
The town of Fondleac, we'll see, as you can see, it's old, it's 15% of our municipal, of our school district, but you can see that their value went up 11.84%. So, they will see, their taxes will go up a little bit, where you see the town of La Martine was down a point, oh, just almost a half a point, so theirs may be reduced a little bit. So, I remember I called this a Mark Flood conversation at Flood Homes. When we were able to keep and stabilize our levy, you called and said, "Well, why is mine going up then?" And I had to explain, "Well, you're in the town of Friendship, and the town of Friendship's value increased while the village decreased, and that's why the burden fell more onto that process."
Okay. And then we're going to switch gears a little bit. Any questions up until that point? And then let's just show their debt counts, this slide doesn't change from year to year, because our debt is what it is. But you can see in 2018, our referendum debt will fall off completely, and then our non-referendum debt is due to fall off in 2021. So, if, once that 2018 debt falls off, that would show a significant change in our tax levy.
And this was on, this graph, even update a little bit more, is on the survey, on the survey that all, you guys should have gotten that survey over with an email. It is getting mailed out on Wednesday, so every, every home, every mailbox, and even more, so, because you have to do it with an postal belt, so there's about 5,000 mailings going out with the survey to each one of the things, so Mr. Kellogg, Mary, Dave, everybody will get one in their house. The district has extra codes, and we'll have extra surveys, and explaining this, and then how we could look at possibly, then doing some things, and making our facility plan go a little faster. So, this is the same information that we're also articulating out in our survey.
Community service fund. We started this back in 2011, and we levied for things that benefit the entire community as a whole. And in the, probably since it started in 2011, we levied above $84,000. And then the DPI had, I guess you remember, I'm sure, how we were kind of stuck at that level. DPI would not allow us to increase that. Even though costs were going up, they would not let us increase past that $84,000. They've since lifted that restriction, so we're recommending that, if you go to the next slide, Erin, we're recommending that that budget be increased to $98,000. We've, we're putting more of the theater expenses in there now, the movie rentals, the concessions, and the supplies. Nothing having to do with the classroom, just the theater itself. Middle school sports, those, those costs on transportation, and our officials and things like that. So, it's still basically the same expenses that we've always put in there, it's just that those costs have gone up.
And we added a crossing there, and we have the Schultz School.
Yes.
We have Mr. Schultz, that's on 175, so we have two crying, and I think it's pretty successful. He's not there right now, he's in Germany, but he will be back soon.
And we've been doing the summer school food service as well, and that's a community-wide service that we provide, so we have some aids in there that we supervise the kids, so we're putting those in there as well.
And we do have, on an average, you're at maybe two students from St. Paul's that participate basketball or cross-country with a track, so it is open to community age group if anybody wants them.
So, that would be an increase of about $14,000 in that, in that fund over the last And then this is a summary of the school basics levy, the general fund and the non-referendum in the first box. Again, next, under the revenue limit, so that's the maximum that we can raise there. And then the referendum debt, recommending 1.68 million, and that is overlevying by 600, and I believe, 670,000.
Which, which, if everything passes, we come back next week. The idea then is that $33,000 or $38,000 for...
Yes.
That would come out of there, so we'd overlevy less from paying off our debt early, so that the money that we, that we need to pay at the Springs and WLA for vouchers doesn't negatively affect.
And that community service fund at $98,000 for a total levy of $4,772,157, which would keep that mill rate at 964. So, if that, if they lower, as Erin was saying, that fund 39 levy is going to be less, and I'm for sure that that's going to be less, but our mill rate would still stay at 964.
As you're doing that, are you anticipating an increase in tax value, property value?
That's already, the value has been set as of October 14th, we have that value.
That was 4% increase.
Yes.
First time we've seen an increase in, in a while, actually.
And that, again, that's an average for all the townships and villages?
The value, yes. The equalized value is the value of all of the...
Of the district.
All of the municipalities. Yeah.
Right here. Came from there.
This is where it came from. For, this is the first time that I can remember in the past, well, since 2012-13, that we've seen an increase of about, otherwise it's been pretty stagnant, or minus 2%, 1%.
Last year, it was 476 million, so gone, I forgot to mention that. All right. And then I just, I just included some budget highlights, some of the bigger ticket items that are included in the budget. It should say 16, something in the budget. I'm sorry about that. So, the revenue assumptions, I am assuming that we're going to get that maximum special ed aid of $150,000. Been receiving it every year, there has not been any indication that it's going to go away. So, we are one of, I think, 11, 10 or 11 districts that receives that full amount. I also have in there $50,000 in school-based services revenue. I think it will be higher, but that's a conservative amount, and that's our school-based services and Medicaid.
So, our employees had help with doing things to help students' need and also physical need. They bill those hours, Debbie works with Kim and with her team, and it's quite the process, but then we get reimbursed for doing those services for those kids.
And then the budget also includes a transfer from the OPEB trust, and transfer is naturally the right terminology that I should be using. We are actually going to be using $100,000 of the OPEB trust to pay those trust expenses. In the past, content has been able to cover those, and we've been able to leave our trust fund intact. So, right now, it's at 200 and 12. So right now it's, it's at $201,000 and that would lower it by $100,000. Our, our obligation is about $200,000, but I'm thinking we'll, we'll probably use about $100,000 of it.
And a lot of that also depends on how much our retirees are utilizing their HRAs. So it could be more, it could be less. I mean, we've had some that have retired and they haven't even touched, and almost have up to their $63,000 that they have the right to, they just haven't used yet, so.
And then, um, the expenditures column, we've added staff, um, to support those increases and students, those numbers. Uh, we've talked about all of those, Dr. Teaching and Learning, our Dean of Students, Skills Tutor, we added that in. Let's see, we've been able to do wage increases for all of our staff. Um, the 10%, increase in health insurance premium, looks like that's going to be it. We were hoping that it was going to be lower, um, but the final numbers that we're getting, it's gonna be probably between 1.6 and 10%.
And that could be some design changes a little bit with, um, medicine and drugs.
Yes.
But we'll be talking about that next week.
Yes.
Insurance companies are really, it's quite, it started at 38% is what our increase was gonna be. And then we'll be all over the weekend and went down to 10, if you do these things.
Yes, so, yes, from 39% down to 10. Yes, um, and we are gonna have to change our, we're gonna have to have that dress, design changes in order to keep it. Okay, and then the last column there is fund balance. And we are projecting a deficit of $147,606 right now. You know, we've got a whole year to, to work on that and whittle that down to a balanced budget. If it is $747,000 deficit, that would bring our fund balance down to 20.6%. So we wanna continue to monitor that and, and, um, work on getting that to zero. Okay, and then the next slides show where we are spending our money. Really not a whole lot of changes over the last few years. Um, most of our expenditures are in salaries and fringes. And because we contract out our food service and our transportation, I like to think of salaries and benefits in that green pie piece as well. So, um, we're at about 75% of our, of our expenditures are for salary benefits and purchase services. Um, and then this slide compares us to the state over the last few years. The information for 15, 16 won't be out until March, but it, this just gives you an idea. This is a new slide. I'm trying to keep it exciting because it's exciting as it gets. Um, uh, this just shows that our district consistently spends under the state average for people. Um, and then same with the revenue, we are consistently below the state average for comparative revenue.
So what, okay, so per pupil spending, maybe I'm not getting this, in all of the other graphs. So what does that, so per pupil, does that mean salaries?
Does that mean? That's everything.
Everything.
Yeah, that's basically what it costs to educate the child.
And that's all our revenues from federal money, tire money.
Gotcha. The revenue one, yes. What about my kids? Okay, um, and then I can, I can report, um, in March, on what 15, 16, I think it was. I have those numbers, oh, yeah. And then this is just kind of a summary of, this summary. Um, I tried to give it to you in just one little snapshot of last year compared to this year and then that change and the percent change. So in salaries, you know, that's going up about 10%. Um, benefits went up about 7.81 and then all the way down, down the line. Um, the, the other, I know it looks like 519%, which is true because of where we are now reporting our post-employment benefits. We used to report it in Fund 10 and it's a different object. And now we're actually reporting it in Fund 73 as Bonnie pulls the note payroll. So kind of a long explanation, but that's why that looks a little out of whack.
And where you see salaries and benefits, you see that increase, remember that also includes the dean of students?
Yes.
That includes the director of teaching and learning. That includes, I believe, um, one-fifth of a teacher in math, or no, two-fifths in math. Includes one-fifth in, um.
Tech ed.
And tech ed, uh, includes a whole, like, one special education teacher. Includes a, a, two aides, one being an L P N, uh, skills tutor. So that isn't how much everybody's wages went up.
Right.
That's how much more we're spending on salaries. But that's also based on that we have more kids, so we need more people.
And then our summary for you. Um, this one just compares, just kind of, again, the bigger line items that, that I look at and then Erin looks at when we're looking at the budget, um, what our revenue limit is and how that's changed. What our state, how our state aid changed. And that's, that's where I got that 8% from, um, went up 670,000 over last year, 8.12%. Our tax levy looks, the dollar amount is going up 4.08%, but the mill rate is remaining at zero. Equalized value went up 4%, we talked about that.
Note very numbers, Steve wrote the room in it all. One thing too, do you guys remember that group I was telling you that I'm meeting with? Um, it's got the vouchery people, it's got Ted Nisker from C C six, Mark Hans from Helms Brook. And we're trying to look at aid. One thing that I think is gonna be in the governor's budget is going to be the equal payments of state aid on a monthly basis, um, which will have a significant impact on how fund balances work and how much fund balances we need for cash flow. So we're, we're looking at, there could be some possibilities to have some flexibility coming up too. That doesn't cost anything, it could actually help us out quite a bit, so.
Well, we've, how many years has it been since we have not had a short-term borrow?
Ever.
We never?
Absolutely.
Well.
Unless, not that I can imagine.
Prior to die.
We have that.
Full stop, yeah.
We have our safety net with Nats National Exchange Bank, um, for $400,000. We've been doing that since we, since I got here, right? Yeah, um, and we've never used it, but it's there in case we need it. Because our fund balance, while it is 23%, it really, sometimes it's 10. You know, just depending on that time of year and, and then we really watch some of those bigger expenditures and try to time those, just like anybody would with their own cash flow, so.
If you watch the in and out numbers at reward meetings, sometimes there's a lot of money.
Yeah.
When you look at the Treasury report, we had a negative $128,000 at the end of June, right before our payment came in July.
Yeah, and, and, um, you know, and even when you look at the revenues, I don't think we did the Treasury report, Erin, at the beginning.
No, go next.
Oh, okay. Um, but when you look at the revenues that are reported on June 30th, a lot of that is receivable. Our, our last state aid payment isn't there, but it's considered revenue. But we don't have it in cash yet. Our last aid payment, our, you know, some of those, those bigger receivables, we just, our tax payment, we don't get that till August. But it's in there as a revenue, so it's a little deceiving. So summer's a little bit tricky for us, um, as far as cash flow goes. Any other questions?
That's why your fund balance is so important, because of when your payments come.
And if they take, currently, right now, we could take, we could take our aid payments in equal payments, but we'd have to pay the state, the DPI, the DPI holds on to that. So the DPI makes about $5.6 million by holding on to our money. And, um, their fiscal bill right now, our group is having them run some numbers that districts are paying close to, I believe, $8,000, $8 million in short-term borrowing costs. So if this one thing can go, that we can equalize payments, um, it could have an impact on how fund balance is looked at and what fund balance is used for.
So the, um, the budget that was published in the paper on the very last page, that's going to show, um, the proposed property tax levy. And, um, I just added a couple of lines at the bottom in there that show what the mill rate was in the past and what it is proposed to be. Again, the expenditures will change just a little bit in the next week.
So if I got this straight, you know what the equalized value was? You know what the state aid is? So this should be a fine, well, uh, verily advisory, the school board basically would be approving this budget.
Yes, well, when I did this, I had to publish this before I got the state aid numbers and the equalized value, which came out Friday, but this had to be published on the 10th, so that's why there's.
Oh, we're pretty close.
Oh, yes.
And we didn't have the voucher most of that week.
Right.
So we have those now, so, but you're right, there's a kind of.
You're absolutely right, yeah. The state aid number's gonna change by about $3,000. So we were very, very close.
All right, any questions? And then, um.
So, questions, comments on the presentation? All right, then next on the agenda, Treasury report?
I can read that if I can go on.
That would be fine.
Excellent. Uh, 2015, 16 receipts and expenditures and balance on hand of June 30th, 2016. Revenues were $14,385,509. Expenditures were $14,451, $51,600. Cash balance on hand was a negative $128,395.04. Do you think we have to approve the adoption of the school board report? Back to number five there. Motion. We did that last year, so.
All right, so, so then I will, uh, look for a motion to approve the presentation on the school board, um, budget. Just go to the board.
Yep. I'll make the motion to adopt the school board report.
I'll second it.
All right. It's moving second to adopt.
I was opening it, buddy.
Budget report, any additional questions or comments? Mary, now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, Treasury report needs to be approved? All right, so, uh, we heard the Treasury report and I will entertain a motion to accept the Treasury report.
So.
Second.
All right, moving second to approve the Treasury report. If there's questions or comments? Mary, now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item number seven, budget hearing.
I believe we locked that together with the presentation.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
The report.
That's what I'm gonna do again.
Moving on then to agenda item number eight, consider a motion to levy a school tax in the amount of the tax levy of $4,772,157 for operation of schools, people, transportation, building and maintenance. That's capital out like in 16, 17. Entertained a motion from someone?
So.
Thank you.
Second.
Moving seconded to, uh, adopt the tax levy in the amount of $4,772,157. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say the same sign? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number nine, set salaries for school board members. The, uh, salaries are laid out, uh, in the, in the agenda, president, board members, committee members. Question about that is, the only active committee is the facilities committee today. And so are, are non-board member committee members compensated?
No.
Uh, so you have the recommended, recommend, recommended, recommended salaries for school board members. I entertain a motion to adopt the, um, salary structure as presented.
And that's the same as it's been for many years. Yeah, yeah, and technically, we're just setting it, there's no recommended rate, but, you know, I guess we agree the recommended rate is to keep it the same. But anybody can make a motion, make anything they want, basically, so.
$80,000. The national health impact that budget, I talked about, but, um.
Under wherever the district do, is that itself, it's moving up into like $12,000, $13,000 there. And next year, at the end, we'll be brought back to zero for, so, kind of paid it back a little bit, that's it.
I'm surprised they allowed you to get recalled after themselves, I guess.
That's right.
Again, I'll entertain a, a motion that we keep the, uh, the same as listing to each other.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mary.
I'll second it.
Moving seconded to, uh, keep the salaries for school board members the same. Additional comments or questions? Additional comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign? Any abstentions? Carries. Item number 10, authorize reimbursement for avoid expenses for actual and necessary expenses for traveling and performance duties. This is annual. I'll second that. Additional questions for me? Purchases? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Any abstentions? And that motion carries. Item number 12, allow district through board action to purchase land and property throughout the year. This allows us to purchase property, uh, by majority of the board vote without any rehaving special meeting. Oh, did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry, accident insurance is number 11. Authorized purchase of accident insurance for students. This is also a annual event for insurance for athletes and building trade students. And I'll second that. Additional questions or comments?
Yeah, one question, is the building trade programs still working in operation or is, I haven't heard anything, um.
It's transitioning right now.
Maybe it's no.
No, absolutely not, not, not at all. What happens is, is Chris Cardinal, we, um, we currently are not, the last house that we built was with, um, Clarity Care. Um, you know, Mike McDowell, who's our new technology education teacher, he's working with, um, Chris Cardinal, who was gonna buy a lot of Minnesota and then build it and then he was gonna be taking his kids over. But now Habitat Free Man, he might be getting that lot, he's gonna be working with them. Um, and then also there's a, a construction going on over by, um, the, uh, stretch at Max's. And that's, I forget what the name of that group is, that company, but Mike's also been in touch with them. So he's also taking the kids and they're, they're starting to go on site and do anything. So we're not per se building our own homes, but we're utilizing other contractors and getting them some. Oh, yeah, Oriole Real Estate is out of business right now. Come back.
All right, any other questions? If not, uh, all those in favor of purchasing additional accident insurance for students, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item number 12, allow districts through board action to purchase land and property throughout the year.
And just to note, there is nothing on the horizon. And there is that piece of land and, I don't know, they contacted me, I called them back, but they never contacted me again, so, don't know. But there is nothing on the docket. Just, I don't, that was always concerned, that, so setting up there is another thing. Now, even if there is, it would be a regular board meeting, published thing that we would talk about.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, any additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the. All those in favor of approving the board to have the ability to purchase land and property throughout the year, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number 13, direct the school board to furnish school lunches to the peoples of the district. It's a yearly resolution. Continue our hot lunch program.
Which breaks a lot of existing positive fund balance. And they have to.
Look for a motion for that? Looking from the back table by any chance?
I don't know, I wouldn't.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
All right.
Yeah.
Harry's been all over tonight.
All right, we've been seconded to furnish school lunches for the peoples of the district. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Got a tiebreaker.
Motion carries. Last item on the agenda, under items of new business, discuss survey and answer any questions.
Love me, just before we go, there's one item that's no longer on here. It's that special bus kids more than up to six miles to private schools. And we had a conversation with the academy now, all being out on the ledge. Found out that our school district is actually where Fazoli's is on 1 on 41, right there. So St. Mary's Springs on the ledge is actually 4.98 or 99 miles, which means that's within the realm of our legal obligation to bus students. So you no longer needed that.
So the five miles is from the closest.
The closest.
The school district to where the school.
A normal path.
And Fazoli's is in the north of Lake.
It's right on that side of 41. If it was on the other side of 41 or in the middle of 41, it might be about 5.01 miles. But then, is it to the land? One of the things, as we had talked about this, and I talked with Mike Toca, there's only one real, the first course case I'd ever looked at busing private students was actually Colombian versus somebody with St. Mary's Springs case in the early 70s. So this was one that we had talked about a while back. There would be a lot of money spent on illegal and surveying, so it's within that. So knowing that now, there was no need to put that on there anymore. And then just with the survey, that I had sent out. Really excited about how everything's starting to come together. The timeline, as you can see here. Thursday, the district on 41, employees already got it. And last I heard, there's 41 that did it in the first couple hours. So we had that. Monday through Wednesday, they're going to be sent out communication. We already have out, keep sending outlets for the survey. They should get there Wednesday to Friday. And then on the 31st, send another alert now to families to please complete the survey. And they go out on email also. So any family that we have an email of, we got them to then. Survey data collection ends the 7th. All the data will come, and it will be a public presentation of that data at 6:30 on November 16th. Bill Foster will be here for that. And then after that, depending what the survey data is, that's when we'll start to talk about what we're going to do if there will be referendum questions in April or not, if we need to collect more data, and what will happen. I'm going to work with Mike Gonzalez, and we're going to have either this Wednesday or next week, an opportunity for the Hispanic families to come in. And we have that version also. So it's just a great opportunity to collect data, find out information about our district and how people feel, and then also look at the building plan that we have on the move forward. So we are not going to referendum, we're going to data collection. And it's off and running.
Very good. Any other questions about the survey? This brings us to the conclusion of the published agenda for the new week. And I would entertain a motion for a change. That's for you. All right, we've been seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, mistake.
All right, and that's it. And we'll leave in 15 minutes.